It is now five o'clock. February 19th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Madam Clerk, I'll let you read the public statement. It looks like we have people in the audience.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the Council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the mayor. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? No? Okay. Can we have declaration of closed session items by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have three items this evening. They are all for City Council action or consideration. They are real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. And the property designation and the negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to closed session and a regular session convened at 6:00 P.M. Please take your seats. It is now 6:00 P.M. It is now 6:00 P.M. February 19th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
May we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had three closed session items this evening, all on behalf of the City Council, and they all related to property, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property locations and the negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda as well. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those three items.
Thank you very much. We will have our invocation delivered by Father Jude from St. John of Our Catholic Church and the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger.
In God we trust. Therefore, thanking God for everything with a grateful heart, let us pray. We thank you, Lord, for everything. We thank you for everyone gathered here now. Thank you that you know each of us by name and have caused us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you and our trust is in you completely. As we surrender ourselves in this invocation, we ask you, Lord, to inspire our hearts today with your guidance and wisdom. Come, fill our lives with your love. Fill our conversation with your grace and truth. Fill this City Council meeting with your presence. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Victorville. We ask this for your glory and praise. May God bless us all. Amen.
I will just read honoring Black History Month. Tonight, I am proud to join the rest of the City Council in proclaiming the month of February is Black History Month in the City of Victorville. Black History Month is a time for us to celebrate the many contributions made by African-Americans to our great country. I urge all Victorville citizens to celebrate our city's diversity and continue efforts to build unity and to foster peace and prosperity for all. Together, we build a strong Victorville. Thank you. At this time, I will ask our City Clerk to present the agenda to Council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Please silence your cell phones. Persons who wish to address the Council on any specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete a white speaker card located in the Council chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comments section of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per less or per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. All the documents to be considered for approval at the meeting are before the Council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings. So we will start with public hearings, and we have Item B1, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Public Hearing for Community Planning and Development Grants for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council open the public hearing, keep the public hearing open, and continue this public hearing to the March 5th, 2019 City Council meeting.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any council members that have any questions of staff?
Yes. So for the grant fiscal year 2019-2020 is going to be continued to March 5th. I don't think in the history of me sitting in this position, I've seen a continuance of that. I don't know if it's because of the phases and what's happening within the report. I just can assume, but if you can verify for me?
Yeah, and in this case, staff got a little bit ahead of ourselves and did a standard notice, 10-day notice, for this hearing. But in looking deeper into the requirements, HUD has additional noticing requirements that the city will need to fulfill. So since we already noticed the hearing, I will need to send out additional notice to fulfill that requirement.
Anyone else? No? At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I request a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to March 5th, 2019. So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items. They didn't give me the numbers here, just a second. Items C1 through C5 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
I'd like to pull a couple of items for discussion, with the exception of C4.
Which ones are you pulling?
I'm not pulling C4, so the others I am.
Can you name them, please?
Yes. It's C1 through C3 and C5.
Does Madam Mayor invite a motion?
Go ahead.
Yes, I move that the Council approve Items C1 through C5, with the exception of C4 for separate discussion.
I think it was around the other way. I think Councilmember Gomez wanted to pull four of the items and just seek approval on C4.
Begging your pardon, so I'll substitute my own motion then. So I move that the Council approve Items C4 with Items C1, 2, 3, and 5 being removed for separate consideration.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
For Item C1, how can the residents contact to inquire about this home improvement partnership program? I'd like to have that on the record for residents who are here that would like to participate in the home improvement partnership program. Also, when adjusting the budget for the 2018-19, will the modification only apply for the home program, or will it be adjusted for other budgets that are not delineated in consent item number one? Is the 8%, which is a $75,000 equity share, considered revenue increases for home programs' budget? This consent calendar is two-pronged disseminations of monies. Please present into the record a brief explanation of how HUD's rules require the money spent before original allocations can be spent, since this is not explicit in your report.
Mayor Garcia and Council, I can answer those items. Regarding the question about the budget and what home rules dictate for as far as reuse of the funds, this is basically a mortgage assistance program, a home, first-time home buyer program loan that was funded with home funds. So you often see mortgage assistance program loans, but there's various funding sources. This happens to be home. So the requirements are that the program income funds are spent on other home-eligible projects. In this case, as the staff report states, we are asking for the revenue to be received and the funds to be allocated for expenditure on our senior home repair program. Regarding the question of how our public could, and our citizens, could know about the programs, all of the programs are listed on the city's website.
So if I may clarify, then, we, when we receive federal funding as an entitled city, the city can go ahead and reallocate through a council approval majority for the allocation, reallocation of these to occur, regardless of them being different phases and not being
There are, there is no phasing what the Council can do, and what we're asking to do is, is to reallocate the money for a home-eligible project. So in this case, the income is from a mortgage assistance program loan, and we are asking for the funds to be set aside for a senior home repair program. Both are home-eligible.
The reason I worded my question that way was because we do have the kitchen and we do have the senior program, and I know there was three phases, so I was making a connection with that specific example, but I can see how this is different.
It's a different project.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then for C2, a list of speakers are listed, and one out of the entire list gets comments written on. How is this process of selection and comments of speakers aligned with the process? If you would please provide me with a procedural manual if one exists and documentation for the assessment. This would be for February 5th and January 29th. I don't know if it was clear, if I need to clarify, but if you start looking at these, you have people commenting, and they're listed, but every single one has one person singled out, and I'm sure that's not the motive of what the agenda should show. So I was wondering if there's a way that we are articulating this, and it just, it was a mishap for this one person to be singled out in terms of what the commentary was. So I wanted to say that. For Item C3, why are, why when we approved ordinance 2383, which was adopted not too long ago, now it's in the consent calendar, but we're going to reestablish ordinance 2383? To me, it just shows inconsistency and maybe more careful thought of council looking at the reportings. And so I don't feel comfortable with this particular item, as I'm going to be voting no on this one, but I want to make sure the comments were delineated. And for C5, I'm requesting a hard copy and email response for an itemized line budget of the $12 million spent between January 17th and February 6th. Please don't tell me to refer to the commercial demand schedules when comparing this line item with figures and percentages. So I hope that's clear. And so I will make the motion to approve Items C1, C2, and C5.
To approve as submitted, I second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox, to approve Item 1, 2, and 5. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to written communications.
Madam Mayor, invite a motion on C3. Yes, so I move that the Council approve Item C3 in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Would you approve that? Need a second.
Councilmember Gomez didn't make a motion on Item C3, so I just.
You missed Item C3.
No.
She does not, I don't believe she wants to vote in favor of C3. That's why she did not.
Was she doing it?
So we need a motion.
I second your motion.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Thank you. I'll move on to written communications now. Item D1, approving the issuance by the California Statewide Communities Authority of multifamily housing revenue bonds for the Kimberly Park Apartments. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-004, approving the issuance of housing revenue bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority for the Kimberly Parks apartment.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Gomez?
Yes, so the City of Victorville received from CSCDA a request of a tax-exempt bond of $15 million. I'm looking at this item that was brought up before council received any details of the monies where they would be spent. So I'm just under confusion with, is there any caps with administration? Is there anything that's going to be received in terms of what percentages will be used for remodeling? If they are indeed going to be refinancing, is this something that we want to approve? And when was the last time staff visited the apartment since this request? What is the timeline for repayment to the city? I'm under assumption that there's a repayment, but perhaps clarification from staff could demystify that. If any equity share will be gained, what is it? What are the figures and numbers and other comparisons from former contracts with other apartments that the city has formally adopted and contracted with bonds? And was the green, and for instance, I'm just assuming Green Tree would be an example sort of this. So you can see there's a lot of misnomers, and hopefully staff can definitely demystify. And did the city administration notice the City Council of the Tefra Public Hearing? Please add me to the interested party list to receive information of such meetings. When and if Willow Partner refinances not to exceed the $15 million in tax-exempt bonds, will it be to Jon Stewart the company? Will it be to the partner? Who will it be towards?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and I think it may be helpful to just kind of talk through the relationship of CSCDA, this apartment community, and the City of Victorville. So first of all, this is involving 100% private activity. It's not something that the city is involved in from the perspective of owning or operating or even managing the apartment community. The apartment community is located generally behind Stater Brothers over on Hook and Armagosa Roads, and it's a community that's been built since about 2002. If my recollection serves correctly, it was financed using California tax credits to help raise funds for its construction. The project is owned privately, not by the city. It's financed privately, not by the city. And similar in this relationship with CSCDA, CSCDA is a joint powers authority that has the ability to issue bonds to help further affordable housing needs throughout the state of California. The CSCDA in this particular case is the issuer, not the city. And in fact, very simply put, CSCDA is required in our agreement to actually seek our consent before they actually participate in any issuance of bonds for a project in our community. So effectively, that's what's occurring here is, despite all of the description that's in the discussion section of the staff report, they're coming to us because they're required to get consent of their ability to help finance the rehabilitation and refi, rehabilitation and the sale of this, this project. So our role is very, very limited in this case. As it relates to the Tefra process, that's one thing that's required to be conducted. It's something that we do by administratively, and that's already been satisfied. And to my understanding, there were no comments yielding or resulting from the Tefra hearing process. I think it is important to note that the type of financing that is being used through the CSCDA, where effectively they would issue bonds and effectively issue a mortgage to the owner of the apartment complex. They are increasing the affordability requirements to the apartment community. Right now, that apartment complex is about 132 units, and currently, until this deal is complete, is required to set aside 80% of the units to benefit low-income households. The affordability covenants will actually increase to require 100% of the units to benefit low-income households or those households with area median incomes not exceeding 80%. So with that, hopefully that helps clarify and answer your questions.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick comment, if I may?
Yes.
Just to springboard off of what Mr. Metzler said, just, so just to be very clear for our audience members. So as it relates to this item, there's zero bond indebtedness, zero debt service requirements. If the borrower in any way to default, it's not visited upon the city.
There is no obligation to the city.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I just have a comment, I think it's a question, but I, as I understand it, all the units, if this, if this goes through and approved by the City Council, all the units then will qualify as the city's obligation for low and low-income housing requirements of the state.
That's correct. We would count them towards our requirements.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
May I move the adoption of Resolution Number 19-004, as recommended by the staff?
I second it. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments?
Yes. The hearing in Conference Room D on January 22nd this year, which was less than 30 days ago, opened up at 2:05 and closed in public comment because there was no one in the audience, not a single person. The meeting started with staff and two proponents for a $15 million bond, and discussion ensued at 2:06. Then, close three minutes later, this conversation for $15 million took less than five minutes. And who shows up? No one in council, no one in the public interest. Just, if you would, please provide me with hard copies and email responses about the Cal statewide community development. I'd just like to get refreshed in what this even means. And I appreciate your, your understanding. It really clarified my vote in this particular instance. Staff, please know that I'm interested in having council calendar with city-related business that affects our residents, so please add me to any and all lists that are to the calendar, particularly Tefra. This is something that I've never encountered. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to Item D2, ground lease by in-between Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and HDSI LLC. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and City Council adopt Resolution Number SCLA-A19-001 and 19-008, thereby approving a ground lease agreement by in-between the SCLA and HDSI LLC.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Ramirez. Ms. Jones?
None, thank you.
Jim?
None.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes. How does the agreement between the city and H, I think it's HDSI, impact the current revenue for year 1819 mid-year budget? I'm talking in figures and percentages. This parcel of land that we discussed, I believe it's zoned industrial. I'm not sure, C2, but if you can clarify that, I'm assuming SLA is all industrialized. And why is this agenda item submitted by the Deputy City Manager, Mrs. Smith, rather than the Airport Director, Mr. Ray? Please explain more in detail the following sentence from the report, and this is, I'm reading quote-unquote from the report. If you can explain that sentence. "An initial step in the process was to transfer the subject property from the city to SLA as the property acquisition was funded by SLA." The other question that I have is, what is the budget that SLA controls and how much money is currently in the budget account? What is the budget account number? I don't think I saw it there, that's why I'm asking those questions. I don't think I saw it there, that's why I'm asking those questions.
Madam Mayor and council, I can answer those questions regarding the budgetary impact to the fiscal year 1819 budget. The project was originally budgeted for revenue in the amount of $2,000 over the 12-month fiscal year period. However, as we are in February and this lease will become effective March 1st, we will only receive $8,000 in revenue, so at mid-year we will reduce the $24,000 by $16,000, resulting in an $8,000 revenue projection for this fiscal year. You asked about the zoning of the property, it's specific plan zoned in the SLA specific plan area with an underlying designation of industrial. And regarding the sentence you read from the staff report about the transfer of property, when the property was acquired for another project that was never built some 10-plus years ago, it was vested in the name of the City of Victorville. As we were going through due diligence for this ground lease and looked at the funding source for the parcels, it was actually funded with SLA funding. And so as part of the initial due diligence, we brought an item to council and asked for the property to be properly transferred from the city to the airport authority with the background information. So that's the explanation for that sentence.
I think there was also a question about you being the negotiator, and I believe you have been the negotiator on this project instead of Mr. Ray, is that correct?
And I can address that, and then I'd just like to add a little bit to Sophie's comments. So this is a transaction that I had taken the lead on maybe a couple of years ago in my Assistant City Manager capacity. And since having taken on the duties of City Manager, I needed assistance from the Deputy City Manager, so I've effectively asked her to serve as the point in continuing the discussions that had started a couple of years ago now relating to this property and this project. I would like to add, and I think it's important to connect dots with respect to the question about the last sentence in the staff report, which was effectively talking about the transfer to SLA. The dots that I'd like to connect is that the property that we're talking about, the subject property, it's the same property that was originally contemplated to be the site of the Victorville II power plant. And since that plant was not built, and it was largely not built, there was a couple of reasons, but largely market-driven, the landscape for power in California has changed dramatically to where the project that was originally contemplated as Victorville II, that type of power is not needed to serve and not beneficial to serve the statewide grid. And certainly, there's been a greater shift to having a larger amount of renewable energy into the California system. And effectively, if this transaction gets completed as contemplated in this agreement, which the project is currently going through the entitlement process right now, you'll effectively see on our property, which is about 365 acres, they're actually expanding the footprint beyond ours to include private properties that they're acquiring, but effectively will be an entire solar array of power generation that will eventually feed the California grid. And with that silence, perhaps I can just identify that there are representatives here in case there's any questions of the proponent to the project. Middle River Power is the owner of High Desert Power Plant, which is existing, but they're also the developer of this project, so they're certainly available. Mark Kubo, I know the CEO of Middle River Powers in the audience, if you have any questions of them.
So with that, I'll make a motion to follow staff recommendation and approve this item.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So I move to approve that the Southern California SLA and the city adopt Resolution Number 19-01.
I still need to, I don't have any speaker cards. None? Okay, there's no speaker cards. So at this time, I do need a motion and a second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, one other thing, I'm requesting that city administration and staff add a key or a legend that council can refer to in terms of the funding accounts. For example, look at the budget account number 4500125-45220. What does that mean? I can only presume it's the SLA account. Thank you.
And just to be clear, did the motion include the second Resolution 19-008?
It was a City Council Resolution and a Airport Authority Resolution. Councilmember Gomez, was your motion to approve both resolutions?
Yes, as recommended by staff, I just didn't get the opportunity to finish.
My intent was the second was for both of those, thank you.
Perfect. Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to Item D3, City Council appointments to the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste, JPA and Victor Valley Economic Development Authority. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council consider and appoint members to serve as an alternate delegate to the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste, JPA, and primary delegate to the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff? I will start with Ms. Jones.
None, thank you.
Ms. Ramirez?
Now, the only question that I have is because of the fact that I am the alternate to the, let me read it, Victor Valley Economic Development Authority, I move that I be placed as the primary.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, to appoint Ramirez as the delegate for VITA. Is that the one, or Mojave?
No, we're on the, let me see. No, this is the JPA, the Mountain Solid Waste.
I think the motion was specifically for the moving from being the alternate on the VITA board to being the primary on the VITA board.
No, the Mountain Solid Waste, I'm an item, the item that I'm on is Mountain Solid Waste, JPA, which is the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority, so. Oh, I, we're.
Mayor Garcia, if I might try and clarify, yes.
We're going to the second one instead of, okay.
Correct, yes, there are two vacancies.
They're not giving me the first one, they're giving me the second one.
That is correct.
Okay, I see. Go ahead, we were.
So the motion was by Ramirez, seconded by Gomez. Is there any further questions or comments?
Yes. These are truncated, but I'm assuming that they're going to be understood by staff. What are the meeting times? What are the requirements? What does the pay for the committee in terms of other organizations paying for these particular meetings attendance? I know the City of Victorville doesn't pay, but I know the external cities, the external organizations do. And VITA meetings and cancellations that have happened for January and February, the reasons why? I'm assuming because it's a dead committee, but I would like staff to verify that. The role of JPA and its purpose. So really digging into times, meetings, pay, dead committees, open committees, and their purposes.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and just bring in to your attention page 233 of the agenda, I think that will help answer the question as to meeting dates and times, which more specifically say the third Wednesday of January, March, September at 4:30 PM, which is the VITA meetings. And I wouldn't necessarily characterize it as a dead committee because they do in fact meet. Their business largely is focused on ROPS, or Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule-type activities, resulting from the role it plays as a successor agency in winding down the affairs of the former redevelopment agency. As to pay, that JPA does not pay its member representatives.
I have a motion.
Then if I may clarify, January's meeting was canceled, and so was February's meeting for VITA. VITA is part of the redevelopment agency and ROPS, and it's my understanding, attending as an audience member, SBCTA, that what has happened, and also looking in with other county staff, that this particular with ROPS is still only alive in the terms of staff having to transmit documentation of remnants of these costs, but the meetings are not, no longer happening. And so that's why I literally called it a dead meeting or a dead committee. So that's what I'm understanding with my research that I've done.
As to the February meeting, there was no February cancellation because there isn't a February meeting that is part of its regular schedule. The one that was canceled in fact was January due to the lack of business. I do believe that the March meeting will be held, and I do believe their primary focus of business will involve the distribution of taxes collected by it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
I would like to nominate.
Sorry, I need to, can I get a roll call of that vote? Jim? I need the, who opposed?
I did.
I opposed.
I. Aye.
Jim? What was your vote?
Aye.
Motion passes with Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Jones voting no.
So then we need an alternate now?
For the Mojave JPA.
I.
For VITA.
I nominate Deborah Jones as the alternate.
And I nominate Rita as the alternate.
Rita's the delegate.
Madam Mayor, if I might, maybe we'll go back to following the script, if you will. I think the little confusion that we're having here right now is that with Dr. Ramirez having served as the alternate on VITA and being appointed the primary on VITA, that creates an open space at the VITA. But perhaps to stick to the primary script, maybe let's not lose sight of the fact that we now have an open seat available for the VITA alternate, and perhaps focus on what's agendized, or at least what's scripted, which is the Solid Waste JPA.
So we need a motion now for the alternate? Is that correct?
For the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste JPA.
For Mountain Solid Waste JPA, we need a motion for the alternate. I make a motion to appoint Deborah Jones.
I second it.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments?
Yes, I'm a little confused as to what just took place. There was two motions, and then we retracted, and we reinstated the same motion. And so that's a little bit confusing because we were talking about the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste JPA. Would you explain what just occurred?
I think there was confusion previously as to whether we were trying to fill the alternate spot on the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority. As Mr. Metzler pointed out, we went back to follow what's in the agenda, which is seeking an appointment to the alternate position on the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste JPA, and that is the motion currently on the floor.
So then in other words, you're stating that there was confusion within the council's understanding of where we were going to? Is that your explanation?
Yes, there was some confusion as to what position, what alternate position we were voting on previously. Now the vote before the council is to consider the motion to designate the alternate on the mountain and desert, sorry, Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste JPA.
Who's the delegate?
Garcia.
I have a motion by Mayor Garcia, a seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
At this time, Mayor Garcia, since we do not technically have the designation of the alternate for VITA on the agenda, we should probably put that on to the next meeting. Because the agenda item was only to do the primary on VITA and the alternate on the mountain waste.
Okay, so that one will be on the next.
Yeah, the alternate for VITA will remain vacant until the next meeting, and I would ask that you add that to the agenda for the next meeting.
Very well, thank you.
Isn't there, this is a legal question for you, isn't there something where we can essentially vote to have that part reinstated at the moment, or no?
Unfortunately, the recommendation was just to appoint members to serve as the alternate delegate to Mountain Solid Waste and primary delegate to Victor Valley Economic Development Authority. There's nothing in there about designating the alternate. That position became vacant by moving Councilmember Ramirez to the primary position. That was not anticipated.
Okay, I don't have any speaker cards on this item, so there's no other discussion or anything?
Yeah, I have a question then, and I don't know if this was staff, but do we, or can we start anticipating things of this nature so that we don't come back and bring them? They just seem very motivated, and I know the city is not motivated to incline to do anything of this nature, so perhaps being a step ahead.
Well, I would necessarily say that we are not.
I'm sorry, I'm on my question version, and I would appreciate it if I can finish my comment. I have a two-minute limit, so I appreciate decorum and professionalism by the chair to be respected, and I appreciate your comment, thank you.
What item are we on, Madam Clerk?
I don't know, I'm still waiting to hear.
D4.
D4, thank you.
Okay, we're on Item D4, discussion and possible action regarding a deferment program on utility bills for furloughed federal employees. At this time, I don't know if the council still wants to consider discussion. It looks like they have already settled their furlough, and it's up to the council. Is there any discussion? Anyone have any?
I would like to say that the policies and regulations are already in effect, not only for the federal employees that were affected, but for any resident in Victorville. So we don't have to take a motion on deferment because individually, each and every one of you can go to the utility office and ask for special consideration depending upon your own personal crisis. So this is something that is available to everyone in the City of Victorville.
I concur, Madam Mayor. I think, I think the question, the city has addressed this, the policy is in effect, that the question for the manager is can that policy be extended? And I agree with Dr. Ramirez that it can be, I guess it requires, ask the manager. It's already in effect, we don't need to take an action. Do we need to take an action to merely extend that authorization to the manager? Or to extend the policy to the federal employees?
That's, that has been the approach of staff, and that's why this item has risen to this level, and of course with the furloughs being gone. The issue for staff, and staff didn't want it to, staff was, staff has policies in place that allow for it to have discretion in cases of hardship. And so for staff, given the federal furlough, staff didn't believe it appropriate to identify that. that issue in itself as hardship, because the hardship that we're used to in dealing with are much more severe in nature. So given the political nature of what was going on involving the furlough and the federal shutdown, staff prides itself upon trying to make the most professional decisions it can make, unbiased of politics. So really, this was being elevated to the council, council's attention, because staff is aware that there's been comments, complaints, even seen other organizations doing similarly natured things, and because it's not staff's view that this really clearly qualifies as a hardship, staff was asking council to make that determination.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, may I comment, then? So just in response to that, then, I'm wondering if, from an abundance of caution, that we might authorize staff to consider federally furloughed employees to, for their, if they report a hardship, that that be a basis for it, any kind of a government shutdown. So just, so my thinking is, is that we already have a process in place for this, it doesn't specifically name federally furloughed employees as a result of government shutdowns being a reasoning for hardship cases, and that perhaps if the council is so inclined, we could certainly provide that authorization to staff.
Yes. So I would like, in consideration of this particular agendized item, to ask and comment for the purpose of discussion, regardless of its history. There are similarities that are probable and possible for the near or far future. What options are currently on paper or documents that allow the deferment of utility bills handled by the city of Victorville? What discretion does administration have in its current state in the area for any hardships which include something of this nature? I would propose a resolution of intent that would be prepared by the city's staff that would include hardships and situations that are government pressures, such as the one with the latest federal shutdown, and for staff to please start adding at least some minimal research, this is because we don't have anything on this, please add minimal research that has teeth in it to actually have an intellectual conversation and discussion, and come up with a rational decision rather than nothing to work with. For instance, staff could have added the shutdown's origin and how federal employees have been affected, especially in the area by doing a bit of research. You're free to use your creativity and imagination to help our residents and city council begin to talk about these propositions. And so I want to propose a motion that would detail bringing requirements for hardship programs that individuals could apply for when such similar cases do come up, such as federal employees having enduring stresses over the last month that we can control. Something not discretionary, because we wouldn't want discrimination, or someone to feel that we're discriminating them.
City manager, don't we have something in place already? That's just what you explained.
Staff is comfortable with what it has, in terms of internal policy, to handle this type of decision or issue, and to the, I think we're fine with what we have.
Yes, okay. I do have one speaker card. Maggie Martin? Go ahead.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. I stand before you as the daughter of a now deceased 20-year Air Force man, Air Force person, Vietnam, Korea, came back from Vietnam, alcoholic, next 20 years of his life. Let me tell you something. I heard what Mr. Metzler said, and I'm going to tell you straight up. I agree with Ms. Jones, I agree with Ms. Gomez. Ms. Gomez, it takes you forever to say what I could say in four sentences, but, lack of conciseness, but I'm going to tell you, I think every veteran, or everyone, not veteran, I'm sorry, everyone who's on government, furlough, past, current, or future, hands down, should get a free ride from the city of Victorville to help them with their utilities. And when I say help, I mean pay that bill. That's what I mean. Because I heard what he said, I'm kind of like, that's kind of, yeah. And I feel very passionate about this, like I do law enforcement. I want you to stop and think. These are the people that protect you. These are the people who make the wheels spin. These are the people who bring the mail. These are the people who govern the parks. These are the people who work for ICE, which I am supportive of. And without them, listen, we'd be up, you know what creek I'm talking about, without a paddle. Support these people. Support them. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had, so there's no need to have the action on this item.
There was a motion by Councilmember Gomez. Is there a second? There being no second, that motion dies.
But just for the record, we are not denying anyone with a hardship to contact the city, and we are more than willing to assist them if they qualify. Okay, I move on to item D5, Approval of Final Track Map Number 14863-1. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve final track map number 14863-1, agree to enter into a lien agreement with Pinehurst LLC as security for the required public improvements for track map number 14863-1, and approve the subdivision improvement agreement for track number 14863-1.
Thank you. Any questions from Councilmembers of staff?
Ms. Ramirez? Do you have any questions? Ms. Jones?
No, thank you.
Jim?
No.
Ms. Gomez?
No, I move to approve the final track map number 14863-1. The agreement to enter a lien agreement with Pinehurst LLC as a security for the required public improvements for track map 14863-1, and for the approval of the subdivision improvement agreement for the aforementioned track map.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? Is there any public comment? Oh, is there any public?
Any public comment on that? Do you have any cards?
No, I don't have any cards.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, Agreement with Fourleaf Inc. for Inspection Services and Amethyst Pumping Station Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve a consultant professional services provider agreement with Fourleaf Incorporated for Inspection Services on the Amethyst Pumping Station project for not to exceed an amount of $64,938.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff, by councilmembers? I'll start with Ms. Jones.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Ramirez?
No.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, what are the current drinking water requirements, and will this boost station envelop or involve the R cubed in the process?
I'm not going to be able to answer in detail the current drinking water requirements. We have staff that could probably answer that question in detail, or they could, because there are certain constituent levels that we, maximum constituent levels, we have to be below. Regarding the R cubed project or the interconnection, this pump house will eventually facilitate a connection to an R cubed line, which is a separate project, so we're going to be doing the piping and the plumbing to accommodate that, but that will be a follow-up project to this one.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? No?
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, we need a motion and a second here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, please let the record reflect that it is September 27, 2018, and not 2019 has entered in today's governmental archives. My next comment is to the city engineer, Brian Gengler. I personally want to thank you for adding the last part of the report, reminding city council of the RFOs, RFQs, with the qualifying firm in a matter that is very neutral. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, Award of Construction Contract for Community Development Block Grant Funded Victorville Senior Citizens Club Rehabilitation Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approves the award of construction contract to RS Construction and Development in the amount of $55,700 for the Community Development Block Grant Funded Victorville Senior Citizens Club Kitchen Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you. Questions from councilmembers of staff? Anyone?
Yes. Mrs. Smith, there are two budget accounts for the 2016, 2017, and another one for the 2018, 2019, are both under the CDBG Victorville Senior Citizens Club Construction. If yes, I'm not sure if your yes is yes or no, I'll let you respond.
Correct, those are both CDBG allocations. One is from fiscal year 1617, and the second allocation is from fiscal year 1819.
Thank you for labeling the budget account. I greatly appreciate your diligence in making this clear, interconnected, intergovernmental budgeting accounts. How does CDBG funding differ from CPD? Was the approval of the 2016-17 Annual Action Plan Phase 1 part of Phase 3, the tertiary funding block? Were the rules or the state's restrictions of sorts that mandated the city to first apply for funding the asbestos program rather than the prioritization of the rehab and construction of the kitchen? Are there alternate pots of money or funding where the city would have offered asbestos funding and left the grant amount of $25,000 for rehabbing the kitchen? Does the city know how the aforementioned decisions have affected the continual use of the kitchen in the senior center? And lastly, what is the purpose of the inclusion of Exhibit C, the federal wage decision? What would staff like the city council to take from this exhibit?
Yes, Mayor and council, the item before you, when it first came before the council in the fiscal year 1617, staff was not aware of the asbestos that existed in the flooring of the senior center, and due to that, that's why they needed to come back for additional funding. It's all through the construction CBGG dollars that are umbrellaed under the California, I'm sorry, Community Planning and Development Grants, which include CDBG and home funds. So before you is, they're both construction dollars, just coming from different fiscal And then regarding the federal wage requirements, that is just referenced in the contract itself.
The reason I ask, because I know there's federal wages and there's state wages, so I was hoping that you would interconnect or probably cause a faction within these two entities, but I don't know if that's even applicable here.
Yeah, what we're distinguishing is just that it has to pay prevailing wage. In this case, it's the California prevailing. Wage would be higher.
Right, so I thought it would have been California prevailing wage, but because we are shown an exhibit of federal, which is less than...
Thirty seconds.
I was assuming that federal was taking priority over the California prevailing wages, and that's the clarity that I was seeking. So would you repeat your response, because I wasn't clear on that?
Yes, they would still be held to California prevailing wage standards, even though it's a federal grant.
And then if you would please answer the other questions, if you remember them, about the monies for the asbestos?
If you could repeat that, or just clarify a little bit more on the asbestos.
I know that the city has different fundings besides CDBG, and we can use it for asbestos.
Yes, and that would come from the construction dollars that are allocated through CDBG.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Her time is up? Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards for this item, so we need a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Begging your pardon, I didn't, I wasn't the seconder on that.
I did.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D8, Request to Approve the Independent Consultant Report from Huntington Andrews Kirkth, LLP. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 19-007, approving the independent consultant report from Huntington Andrews Kirkth, and agreeing to and accepting the recommendations therein.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
Anyone?
So if you look at pages 439 to 458, which is under Exhibit B, you would see a repetition of the same documentation. I have had constituents concerned for an extra set of copies in Exhibit B, perhaps as motivational or intentional to deter residents from reading long, drawn documents. If this is typical and procedural, please stay still so I can clarify when I'm asked about these procedures, and when we have documentation that's just shown up double the time, and if not, I just want to understand as well.
I do not have any speaker cards, and so I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I move that the city council adopt Resolution Number 19007, approving the independent consultant report from Huntington Andrews Kirkth LLP, and agreeing to and accepting the recommendations therein.
Thank you. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. My question is a response that I'm still waiting on, so I would appreciate if staff would verify pages 439 to 458 and what it means.
Just in reviewing, since this was just brought to our attention, it's my belief that this is likely just a mistake. It's certainly not something staff intentionally does.
No, thank you, I appreciate, I just want to make sure for clarification. I appreciate, I don't need any further explanation.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments. And Madam Clerk, did you want to read the statement?
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda, per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to subsequent meetings. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a...
This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and persecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. The first card that I have is Joe Fagetti.
Gloria Garcia, remember this, that you fabricated and lied? It was thrown out of court. You had the city attorney fooled, you had the officer fooled and lied to, you overreached. You're deceptive, this is your own thing. You cost the cities thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. You're overreached because this wasn't filed properly. I'm going to file complaint with the chief, okay? I gave you an hour branch in the beginning of this, and you denied it and still continued on with it. I was in the city, and you made this stuff up. It's horrific. You don't belong to be the mayor, okay? And now how are you going to pay back the city for the thousands of dollars that the attorney spent? This is your responsibility, not the city's. You deceived everybody here, the entire city, because of shenanigans that you do. You need to be held accountable. So what I'm asking you to do now, this is criminal, what you did, lying to a police officer. I'm asking you to step down, because you do not belong in that seat. You're an embarrassment to the city. Can I make myself clear? You lied to everybody. All you did was left your lights on, and all I did was let you know. You're not fit to be a mayor. It's embarrassing. So step down, or I will pursue this. Clear?
Okay. Too bad we cannot defend ourselves against people like this, but that's all right. Maggie Martin?
I'm going to chime in to Mr. Fagetti. That's an interesting judgment and a character assassination yawn on you, when this is a man who several years ago pepper sprayed a person at the Walmart, I'm sorry, Wenco parking lot, represented himself as a police officer, and then fled the scene. So I don't want to hear anything he has to say. I've met Mr. Fagetti several times, in like McDonald's and stuff, very lovely person, but I think he's got issues. And the issue is, he's not getting anywhere with the council, with the county board of supervisors, and he's just bent. Anyway, so I'm going to start my three minutes, except I'm already started, so. All righty, give me a minute. Today I made a public records request. I'm going to read it to you briefly, if I can open it up. All document requests of Blanca Gomez for documents she could have had been aware of or had in her position had she been prepared before council meetings, and how many business cards in all city staff and attorney cost and staff time related to her request. I already know it's in the thousands of dollars. So I don't want to hear any more from Ms. Gomez about the taxpayers' dollars, because if anyone pisses away the taxpayers' dollars, it's sitting two seats to your right, your owner. So that'll be forthcoming, and I will bring that to the next council meeting. Okay. Ms. Ramirez, poor conduct, unprofessional, disrespectful, and to Ms. Jones, which if you were any kind of council member, or let's just say woman at all, in this form, you would make a public apology to Ms. Jones, okay? And in case anyone doesn't know, I had a very lengthy email I sent to Ms. Ramirez, and whether she received it, opened it, saw it, or didn't, I really don't care. It is on front, center, top page of the Remove Blanca Gomez page on Facebook, so if anyone wants to see it, because there's no denying it. Okay, so at this point in time, though, I am going to ask this council to make a public statement of disapproval of Ms. Gomez, especially, I mean, I could write a book on Ms. Gomez, sure we all could, but the way she conducted herself and has continued, something needs to be said about that.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, here it is. I don't know, four or five days ago, a West Valley Detention Center deputy by the name of Nicholas Olafland, new to San Bernardino County Sheriff's, 2017, I believe, summertime, 27 years old, had a brother, a mom, and a dad, and passed away as a result of a drunk driver in Chino. And the thing that comes to my mind is, the zhahus here from centermark, that's what comes to mind.
Your time is up?
That's what comes to mind.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those were the only cards that I had. So at this time, can we have announces or reports from our city manager, please?
I'm going to tell you that I don't have anything to report this evening. Sorry, I found them, if you'll indulge me. Didn't, wasn't expecting to get to this point so fast in the evening. Friends of the Victorville Library Book Sale is Wednesday, February 20, 2019. Victorville City Library, fill a bag of books for $5. All proceeds go to the Friends of the Victorville Library, a nonprofit organization. We're also celebrating Black History Month at the Victorville Library on Thursday, February 21, 2019, 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock in the afternoon. Also, we've got a tree and shrub pruning workshop Saturday, February 23, 2019. It's a workshop hosted by Victorville in collaboration with the MWA. Attendees will learn the basics of pruning trees and shrubs, and tree trimming, and heading back plants. I reported at the last meeting that Wingstop was in the TI stages of their development. I've just got reported that it is now open, so we've got a new eatery here just north of City Hall. And then finally, Mojave River Walk contract was awarded on December 18, 2018. We just started construction this week. That's a $4.7 million construction project, and 3.76 of that is an active transportation program grant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we move on now to E3. This is council member discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I do have one item. We do have the City-County Conference coming up, April 18 and 19 in Arrowhead, and I would like to agendize this item for our next council meeting, which would be March 5, 2019. So I need a motion on this one. My motion is to agendize, I need a second. A second.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones.
Would that, that motion, if you don't mind repeating it?
This is to agendize for the City-County Conference that's coming up, April 18, 19, in Arrowhead.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I'll start with Ms. Jones. Did you have anything to add?
I did, but I think I'm going to wait until the next meeting to present it. Thank you.
Yes, I do. In the month of March, I would like to acknowledge and recognize St. Patrick for all Irish Americans, especially the heroes of 9/11. The second item that I would like to bring to the agenda is the discussion and possible action regarding a YMCA for Victorville. I think that it is an organization that develops, enlightens the young population, and it would be a good place for young families to take their children. And the third and last is in regards to Old Town. The two items that I would like to mention, one is affecting the budget, and that is, I've been requested to put forth the idea of movies in the park for the summer, and secondly, for the city council to consider supporting the mural that they are having in downtown, and I would hope that these three items would be considered by the members of the city council. Thank you.
Are you putting everything in one package? You're agendizing everything in one package?
If it's possible, if not, one individually.
Well, it's up to you.
I'm going to take the motion separately.
Yeah, we'll take them separately, so that you can vote separately on them.
Okay. Start with your first one.
The first item was to acknowledge St. Patrick's Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor...
Question? I have a question. I don't know what that means. I already acknowledged St. Patrick's Day. It's on the calendar, it's, what do you mean, acknowledge it? I'm sorry.
The reason why is that, you're asking why I'm saying it? Isn't that the question you're asking me?
Yeah, well, we already do that. Is there something extra or special?
Well, I don't see it on the agenda, and I have no idea if it will be on the agenda. And I feel that we have to recognize all Americans by our city, so that we acknowledge the fact that we add to the fabric of what is and makes USA strong. And I think that in regards to the Irish Americans, especially for those in 9/11 who gave their lives for others, when they lost companies, entire companies, and it was because of that love of America that they sacrificed their lives, that we have to recognize everyone in the United States. The fact that we don't is like to say, it doesn't matter. And to me, everything matters that makes us stronger, and this is something that gives me pride to know, that there is love, because of culture, because of citizenry, but because of dignity. So those are my reasons, and if it's already practiced by the city council, then I will withdraw it. But I'm simply saying is that we have to recognize our Americans, period. I don't, I don't know. Tell me, do you actually put it on your calendar and on the agenda? I don't know.
May I respond? I, no, I'm not opposed to it. I have a calendar at home that lists all of the special days, and I think there's like 300 of them, and every ethnic group in the United States have a day. If we're going to recognize them all, that's wonderful, but I didn't know why St. Patrick's. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know, we love everyone. We're a nation that's made up of individuals from throughout the world. It's on my calendar, so it's St. Patrick's Day. I don't do anything, except I look for the special, what is it, cabbage and so on.
Corned beef and cabbage.
Yeah, but, you know, it's in the newspaper, and everybody talks about St. Patrick's Day. What does the city do? Just have a proclamation or a resolution recognizing it?
That's what you did for Black History Month. You did a presentation by the mayor. I think that the fact that it was recognized is a wonderful thing, and I commend the mayor for having done it.
Well, I, I, I'm just trying to, I'm not opposed to it. It's not a, I just wondered why, because I thought everybody knew St. Patrick's Day and the Fourth of July. Never mind, I just have no idea what it's about.
So I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, and seconded by Councilmember Gomez, to recognize St. Patrick's Day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
The motion fails.
Second one? Your second one?
My next one was the question of the YMCA.
I have a question. I think it's wonderful, is that going to also include YWCA?
You need to explain that to me. What do you mean by that?
There's young men and young women, they both have organizations and clubs.
Well, you know, with so many homes where there may not be a father or a mother, where they're being brought up by single parents, I think that children need to have discipline, dignity, enlightenment, and the YMCA provides all that for those that are not necessarily complete, but it also provides it for those where the parents care about the future of their children. It's a safe place, it's an educated place, and it, the history of YMCA is that it's positive in the lives of those that actually attend. And I think that anything that makes a child feel better about themselves is worthy of having that establishment in our city of Victorville. I look at Victorville as a city of family values. That's it for me. People matter, regardless of age, and children, young people, need to know that there is a place for them, and that's how I feel about my love for the family and for children.
I'm going to second your motion.
The motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, for discussion of a YMCA. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Oppose. Oppose. Simply because it just is, it's exclusive of YMCA. Inclusive only of YMCA.
Motion carries with Councilmember Jones voting no, and Mayor Garcia voting no.
Your third one?
The next one is the Old Town.
Yes, this is the result of me attending the meeting every Wednesday at 6 o'clock, and if not, Mr. Galinas has done it for me. I have been asked to bring certain issues and items that are being requested by the residents of Old Town. So this is not necessarily an original, original ideas. These are ideas that have been forth, put forth by the people that live in downtown. And I have just simply mentioned the two others that were given to me, maybe handled by the Planning Commission, I don't know, but for these two. One was the request for movies in the park for the summer, and the other was to seek the support of the city council in regards to continuing the mural celebration that they have begun, and those are the two.
We have to go down one at a time.
Oh, okay.
I put it under Old Town.
That's right. But they're two separate things.
Okay, so, okay, so I'll do it separately. For Old Town, the first one was the request of having movies in the park in the summer.
Is there a second?
I want to understand, are you asking for a separate appropriations of monies used from the general fund discretionary to city council, so that that's something that's possible?
I, well, because of the fact that it would require money, and I don't believe it's in the budget of 2018, 2019, it may not be possible until 2019, 2020, when the new budget... in the budget of 2018, 2019, it may not be possible until 2019, 2020, when the new budget is made, and it should include that possibility of offering movies at the park downtown for the children, for the families.
Would you consider marrowing Hisparia? They already do that, and they have a budget, and we could marrow off of that.
I'm assuming that there may not be a budget here in Victorville.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez.
Question. Just for discussion only?
Yes.
Okay.
I would venture out and modify hers to say discussion and possible action.
Is there a second for that modified motion?
may you, Charlie, will you read the modification?
Discussion and possible action.
Possible action. That's fine.
Okay, so do you have a motion or a second?
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez.
Other way around.
Oh, the other way. Sorry about that.
What?
There's a modified motion by Councilmember Gomez to include possible action, discussion of movies in the park along with possible action. That's the modified motion, I believe. Councilmember Ramirez is seconding that. Is that correct?
I second it. Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion fails.
Now you can do the other one.
The last is the question of supporting downtown and the murals that they are painting for the sake of trying to restore the dignity and the love of downtown, and that was that they were asking for the city council to support at least 50% of the cost, and they would do the matching to that. And that is my request.
Is there a second?
I want to understand if you're asking, when you say 50%, what does that figure look like?
In the letter that I received from the root organization, there was no mention of the cost. It was just the question whether the city council would be, would they consider the possibility of helping them with the 50% of whatever the cost that they were going to be taking upon.
And what is your motion?
Say that again.
What was your motion?
My motion was for it to be discussed and with possible action by the city council whether we would support the idea.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez.
Question. This is for, this is for murals?
Yes.
10 of them? Two of them? One of them? 10 by 10? All buildings downtown? I think I'd love to see some information. I read something in the newspaper about a mural, but also read a letter from the editor from Lady for Hisparia that said, "All graffiti was art, and we should allow it." And I think we need a discussion on whether it's a mural graffiti and vice versa. I don't want somebody coming along painting my building. I'm for the discussion. I'm for the discussion, and if, I'm gonna ask that to vote no, because we have a budget coming up, and all these items need to be discussed on the budget. Movies in the park, I'm for that if we discuss it as part of the budget. But to throw these in now and start budgeting items, there's no budget on them now. I think it merits discussion. I'm all for the discussion. I think it has a lot of merit. But I've heard nothing but negative comments about it. I need to hear from more people. I need to find out what's going on. And I did not attend the last downtown meeting, and so I don't know who's in charge now. I keep hearing different people are in charge. I'd like to get an invitation to the meeting downtown next time they have a meeting I'd like to attend. I know we have staff people. We don't have a normal report back to the council from the staff. Maybe we start adding that to the agenda also. Those are my comments, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion fails.
Was that your last one? Was that your last one? Rita, was that your last one?
I'm sorry?
Is that your last one?
That was it.
Oh, okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Council, I attended the county transportation meeting, and this is not a report because the, well, it is a report, but it's an explanation of why I'm gonna make this request to place an item on the agenda because the staff has recommended to the Measure I, I refer to it as Measure I, that the Victor Valley cities give up a portion of their transportation monies to complete an improvement from the Los Angeles County wide, Los Angeles County property line on Highway 18, Palmdale Road, easterly for about $4.3 million. They want to match that, but in order for this to occur, each of the local cities have to give up their road share of $480,000. I'd like this be put on the agenda because I don't feel that I'm authorized to vote to give up anything from the city council unless the whole city council approves it. And they're pushing for this. There's a very short timeline. They claim that they have, they can double the money. For every dollar they put up, the federal government's gonna match it. If the city council approves it, that's great, but if they don't, they're gonna have to find out their sources, the same as LA County did. So I request that this be put on the agenda for discussion and possible action because the deadline, without an action by the council, then I would be forced to abstain. Or if I have an action from the council, I would vote yea or nay, depending upon the actions of the council. I'd like to have this be put on the next agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia.
Mr. Cox, if you don't mind repeating your motion?
I'm sorry?
If you don't mind repeating your motion. It was quite lengthy with the discussion.
This is a request to put on the city council agenda for discussion and action on whether or not the city of Victorville is willing to give up a portion of its road fund, road money, for the city's road money to, to match a share to improve Highway 18 from the Los Angeles County line easterly.
How much?
Well, right now, what they're asking us to give up is $480,000. That may change. They don't have bids. They don't have the amount of money. They estimate that the construction is $4.2 million. If they don't get the money, they'll want the city to put up more. It's very open, but the whole question is, is the city council willing to give up their city street money for Highway 18 from the Los Angeles County line? That's why I'll get more information, and if we put this on the council agenda, hopefully staff will, excuse me, obtain the additional information as best as we can from Measure I for the city council's consideration. That's all the information I have. Council-
I second this motion.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
I have comments. Thank you. So, Councilmember Cox, I was at that meeting as well, and I don't recall the actual date of the, the vote will be taken on that, and I'm wondering if we might be better suited to have a special meeting, because as I recall, that their vote is gonna be taking, be taken right on the heels of our next, it's gonna be taken on March 5th, I believe, which is our next council meeting. So I'm wondering if a special council meeting would be more appropriate.
You may be right. The deadline for filing the application is March 4. When's our next council meeting?
5th.
5th.
March 4?
March 5.
March 5. Oh, that's the day after the deadline. Okay. It would require a special meeting of the council. Sorry.
Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, if I might, we do have a special meeting next week that perhaps could be used to help accommodate this discussion as well. And just as I've been briefed on the meeting of Friday, the CTC meeting, I did not attend, but I've been briefed, I believe the subject matter was specific to Highway 138, not Highway 18.
I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Highway 138. I'm sorry. You're right.
With the direction of the council, I believe we could go ahead and add that at the special meeting, but it has to be so directed by the council.
So I would like to modify Mr. Cox's motion for the meeting to occur February 26 during the special meeting that we have on D Street. And also to have written documentation of the actual meeting, so something that I'd like to see to read over. I mean, you gave us a briefing, but I'd like to also be able to have the understanding of what has been occurring and how this occurs.
I agree.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So I need to make sure that you took the modification in consideration.
That was the modification.
Okay, because I did modify it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one other item, if I might.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like for the city council to consider an ordinance in regarding to the acquisition of right of ways. And let me explain, let me explain this. It is not uncommon for individuals or investment groups to get a hold of the five-year capital plans and buy property in front of the proposed street improvements so that when you obtain the right of way, the price costs you considerably more than what it normally would if they didn't have the knowledge of having the proposed street improvement. That's not to say that the city should keep it public, but on the other hand, there are investment groups that buy the property for that reason and that reason alone. And then, after it's appraised and you buy the property and you improve the property, the value goes up substantially with the improvement. And then, of course, since it's a speculative piece of property, it's sold at a higher price, along with the amount of money that the city has paid for the right of way, for the improvement that benefits that particular property. It is not unusual for cities to adopt ordinance that says you're not going to do that, and therefore, if the city needs a right of way, it does an appraisal. Property owner has the right for appraisal, mediation, or whatever. You acquire the property, but because it's an improvement, when the individual develops the property, they have to pay the city back. It stops the speculation. It's fair. It keeps property owners from double dipping into the taxpayers' pocket. It is, I can give you an ordinance. I can give you examples. City of Victorville did that for years. Why it changed, when it changed, I don't know. But for this council, you know how the problem that we have in getting right of way, when in fact, if the property owner gives the right of way, they get the improvements free, as opposed to us paying for the right of way and then paying again when they, it also keeps the speculation down, and it keeps the property values where it should be. At least discuss it, take a look at the ordinance. I have brought an ordinance from another city here before. I don't know what happened to it. I recently talked to an engineer from two different cities that have this. I will be more than happy to obtain those and bring them to the council for discussion. I believe that the council will see the merits and the fairness of this, because we are spending taxpayers' money, and often, very often, more often than not, to obtain a right of way that benefits the property, we're also paying thousands of dollars more than what the value of the right of way is. It's unfair. We need to take the action, at least have the discussion, and I'll request that at the next regular scheduled council meeting. We submit that ordinance, not for action, because it's going to be very complicated, and you're gonna have people complain, especially those people who are speculating in the market. But I think it merits a discussion. It'll save the city, thus the taxpayers, tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Mr. Cox, would you be open to having that at the second meeting in March, only to give staff a little more time to provide more information on the issue?
I would be open to having it at any time the council considers it. I think it'll even probably require a study session at the council, because it's gonna be very involved and very in-depth, and you, anyway, it's, it'll require a lot of discussion. Thank you. So whatever the council decides. But it's my request that we put this on an agenda and seriously discuss it.
I second to have this on, what date would that be?
Be March, the second meeting in March. I believe it's the 19th? It'd be March 19th, if that's okay with you, Mr. Cox, if that would be your motion?
That would be, March 19 would be my motion. Yes, and thank you.
So what I want to do is, I also want to modify, I agree with what you've stated, but I also would like to modify it to include, because staff doesn't always provide documentation. And so I'm hoping at this time that they would bring out written documentation, information that would allow the good faith of this council to make a responsible, well-informed decision as to what is happening, because I don't know if anybody else here understands the right of ways, these street improvements, as you have so eloquently put yourself. And with the suggestion of a workshop prior to the actual action, I think would be beneficial. So not only the written documentation, the understanding, but the mini-training workshop, if it's so complex, I think would garner a lot of favoritism, not only with council, but definitely with, with our constituency.
Perhaps it would seem appropriate to have that type of modification after the item's been on the agenda for discussion. It would seem like, because the staff is gonna prepare information regarding it, but once you have the discussion, then it would seem appropriate at that point whether the council wants to schedule a workshop on it as well. That's up to you, Mr. Cox. That's the modification and-
Yes, that should be included. There are other things that'll be included that'll require further action of the council. Just for example, there's a little-known law that if you actually acquire a right of way, and you go down the street, and one of the property owners discovered, hey, you didn't get mine. Now I'm gonna hold out and get an attorney. You can actually, when you acquire the right of way, you have the property owner sign a 1911-13 act petition, and you can actually take the property. If you have a property owner that does that, you take the property, you pay them, and they have to pay you right back because of the benefit that they receive for the improvement of the property. Cities used to do that all the time. I would ask the attorney to research that, see if it's still legal, because right now, we're, we have a lot of road projects in the city. One of the best ways in the world to do a road project is to get the right of way, and if property owners won't give you the right of way, move your money to another street where they will. Right of way, you will find that you have no problem getting right of way for a new street, because they get the improvement. So this is gonna require a lot of discussion, probably legal opinion, and I doubt that you're gonna come to a conclusion with one meeting, but based upon all the money we're spending, right of way that we have to acquire, the method that we've required in the past, it's time that this council had a full discussion, including all those items that Councilmember Gomez mentioned.
There was a modification by Councilmember Gomez. Is there a second?
Are you seconding that, Mr. Cox?
I second it. Yes, I do.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Anyone else have anything to agendize? No?
Mayor Garcia, if I might, could we add the possible discussion for filling the alternate on the Vida position that was not discussed this evening at the next agenda?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to-
I do have comments that I would like to add to the agenda. So as part of the budget for 2018-19, I'd like to discuss and engage in possible action for YMCA and movies in the park per the oral support of Councilmembers Cox's discussion, that it be included in a 2018-2019 discussion of our budget.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So I would also like to include in that, though, the YWCA, not just the YMCA.
I agree with that modification.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember- Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to agendize with the motion, all League of California cities for professional development and training purposes for all city council members that are upcoming, the first one being in April.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
I would like to add to the agenda for the month of March this year for housing for student homeless populations. That includes affordability for college students while in college, with staff bringing in the cost and identifiable statistics, and if it's even more probable, since we've considered a task force, specifically a task force that sees college students and their living situations as being homeless.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
There, there's in April an event that the California League of Cities will be taking outside of the city for training purposes and work-related development. I would like the city council to add this to the agenda, to approve the already appropriated monies as per council policy, and Andre, you can correct my last statement if there is no policy in this regard, and please do.
I'm not sure if there is a policy, Keith. Do you know if there's a policy in place regarding, it's regarding attendance at league meeting?
It's in regards to the allocations of $1,200 that all of us are required and can use, but it's some hiccup or big burp that is not allowed certain council members to use the travels.
My understanding is that the budget does provide for, I think it's a travel-related expense category that she's, Councilmember Gomez is talking about, where we have identified amounts per council person. However, the policy manual, I believe it is, still requires that, or it was action by this council, one or the other requires that for all travel, irrespective of the budget, still requires approval to come back to the council. So, irrespective of the budget, the travel-related question has to be approved by the council.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
There, I also would like to agendize term limits for council members. Discussion and possible action to be agendized no later than 90 days from this agendized meeting.
What was it?
Term limits.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
And my last one is to agendize the repayment of the mayor's costs incurred by the defense of an alleged harassment to a resident in a private setting, nothing to do with your public position as mayor.
There a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Sadie, Attorney. How do we clarify this, where she keeps stating that it's not city-related and all that? It was not a personal issue?
Right, I mean, I could do it...
This man is harassing me.
I could, it's not on the agenda this evening, so we can't discuss it.
I know.
But I could prepare a memo to the council.
I know, but she keeps bringing it up, and the public is getting a different... But nevertheless, it's not personal. It has nothing to do with me. The gentleman just chose to do what he did. Okay, where are we now?
The ground E4.
E4. Did you have any reports, Ramirez?
Do you have any? I do, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. All right, so it's been a few meetings since I've been able to make reports. I think I deferred once or twice, and then we didn't have reports at our last meeting, so I'm going to plow through these quickly. First of all, I'm grateful to our outgoing planning commissioners, Lionel, DEW does everything wonderfully do, and Paula Porter for their years of faithful service to Victorville and for contributing to the success of our city. They'll both be missed deeply. I'd also like to thank the council for confirming the appointments of my nominees to the Planning Commission, the Community Services Advisory Committee, and the Legislative Review Committee. My congratulations go out to Robert Harriman, Michael Smith, and Kimberly Smith on their appointments. I'm confident they'll do outstanding work to make our community a better place to live, work, and conduct business. I attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Peace March. It was a cold and windy morning, but the spirit of the event kept our hearts warm. The unveiling of the Harriet Tubman plaque was terrific, especially after hearing from our essay contest winner, Penelope Trulch. I attended, as an alternate to various committees, a number of meetings. I also attended the League of California Cities Conference for new mayors and council members. It was informative and helpful, and I appreciated the outed opportunity to get to know my colleagues on our governance team, Mayor Protem Ramirez and City Manager Keith Metzler. I've now completed all my state-mandated trainings. Also, I attended a meeting that was requested by the City of Adelanto, and I'd like to thank the City Manager Keith Metzler, our City Engineer Brian Gangler, and our City Planner Scott Webb for lending their professionalism and expertise to this meeting. The mayor and Mayor Protem of Adelanto mostly wished to express their interest in building positive relations with Victorville, but desired also to discuss a light they believe is needed at 395 in Seneca and the current situation with left turns from southbound 395 onto Mojave. Mr. Metzler and his team offered to lend their expertise in providing traffic control suggestions related to the latter, if there any to be had. And also, I just recently was able to take a very helpful tour of our off-airport manufacturing plants, and so many thanks to Anita and Andre at Sterling Development. I'd also like to thank our staff for preparing what I consider to be phenomenal reports and backup data and materials for our, our council meetings. It's, it's quite refreshing to me. I'm not seeing this depth of documentation in prior meetings on other boards, and I'm so very thankful for it, certainly with the volume that they have to deal with. From time to time, there are going to be innocent errors, but I do want to thank them so much, because it's quite a task to put together all of the data that's needed to help inform council member decisions, so I just want to give hats off and a big thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Have reports?
No.
Did you already do your report?
Yeah, I am. So, it's a pleasure to see the carpenters' union being participatory in council meetings such as tonight's. Please, we welcome you back to the February 26, 2019, street lighting priority in Old Town at the Transportation Center located on D Street. I also see other new faces, like Mrs. Lisa and her husband, among other pleasant and new faces. Thank you for being participatory and involved in city governmental business. Now to bring this translation into Spanish. Muchisimas gracias por estar aqui en esta junta que estamos aqui. Estamos para servirles, recuerden la importancia del registro de su voto y la participación de su presencia. Los invito a la junta el 26 de febrero a las 5 de la tarde en la calle D para discutir la prioridad de luces y en nuestras y otras otras áreas en nuestras ciudades. Es un placer tenerlos aquí. Muchas gracias y recuerden que su voz es su voto y en números hacemos la fuerza. Y recuerde si lleno una tarjetita ubicada en la mesa de la entrada puede comentar en tópicos que nosotros hablamos en tres minutos. Por favor tome la libertad y comience, comente sus ideas para reenfocar su ideología. Again, thank you for your participation and civic engagement. Please know that you are free to fill out a card and comment or inquire within three minutes. I look forward to your ideologies and your personal identification, what you think the city should be doing as participatory taxpayers in this community.
There's no other business before the council. This meeting is adjourned.